Keep us in line.
He's too gentle, yes, keeping us in lines.
Right.
It's tough.
Yes.
Well, this may not be good.
Huh?
I may not have a pen.
Oh, okay. I got one, you want a pen?
Oh, yeah.
Gee, pens everywhere.
Cool.
All right, well, he's got one if you need one, or I do.
Usually I can make you a pen.
All right. All right, let's start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brings you back to elementary case. Anyways, thanks for everybody that's here. Dave is upset, unfortunately, because he does a fantastic job. So Dee and I are gonna, we're gonna kind of work off each other.
Dance, dance stroke, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do the dance stroke, right. And try to keep everything rocking and rolling and move this along.
Okay, sounds good.
So, roll call.
Dave Blake.
Marlo Herrick. And we have announcements.
Yeah, I just have one short announcement. I did speak with Greg Goodrich from VHB, and this is about the closed pin bridge. He is telling me that they are expecting to call for the bids to be released in October. And with the bid opening in November. And then, once the bid has been granted, he expects it's still a very long way to secure steel. So perhaps the construction would occur in late fall of 2024. He is going to be in to talk to you, because it's going to be a long period that that road will be closed in order to replace the bridge.
Really? Wow.
He told me six months. I hope it's not that long, but.
Better than ten.
And so we'll have to figure out a detour and plans and things like that. But he will be here to talk to you, and I haven't set that up yet, but at some point. The White Plains, the bids are due Thursday. And I am meeting with Emma and Chad on Monday to come up with who we're gonna recommend the board to grant the bid to.
Did everybody show up?
We had everyone that expected, we had like, I think, four contractors, maybe five contractors.
Because there was six on the list.
Yeah, there was only one that did not. So I will be asking Chad to come to the meeting, your next meeting, to talk to you about that. So those are the updates with the bridge, and that's really all I have.
The closed pin bridge, are we gonna meet with that guy before town meeting? Because I know we're gonna probably be asked something about it, so I don't know if it'd be easier to have him here so we have an answer, or not an answer, but something.
I could ask him to come to your next meeting, which is the, that Monday before town, no, it's a week before town meeting. But I could ask him to come.
Oh, I, if you can get him to come, that, yeah, the more knowledge that we can have to tell everybody would be awesome. Because I'm sure not everybody watches.
Okay, so that would be March 6th. Usually we'd be downstairs that night, because this hall will be set up for voting the next day.
That's right. That'd be great, I think, then we'll sound.
I'll, I'll ask him.
Yeah, okay, that'd be good. Thank you. That's it?
That's, that's it.
You don't have another yellow folder?
No, give me a chance.
Don't give him a chance, all right? Kim, our next, had an appointment to talk about the 1871 water rights. Thank you, Kim, for coming by.
Oh, sure. You take me a minute, Tom. Get myself set up here, so that they cover everything.
Just as, as we go forward, which, again, thank you for bringing this to our attention. We do have some legal advice.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that, just, go back to you over the weekend. And so, and Dave, the chair, is more up on this than DRI. So I'm not sure how, how far we'll get on this tonight, but if we both feel like it's not going anywhere, please don't take it wrong, but we'll probably say that's enough for tonight and move on from there until we can all be together. And, and like I said, legal did get back to us, which we just learned.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Great.
While she's setting up, does anybody in the audience have anything to say?
I just, I just want you, can we do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Teresa had asked a question about what, what it is, what is the 1871? What's the subject is.
Yes. I'm still, Kim brought this, yeah, well, or, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say right now that I don't have, you know, that legal, legal is a whole different world. And if I sat here and told you that I had a legal mind to understand everything, I got, thank God, somebody gave me some common sense, but all this other stuff and, and how, you know, some of what you were saying could happen. You know, so I know Dana talked about, talked to legal, do you wanna kind of talk to that before she gets started?
Well, I'll wait for Karen to start.
No, no, go ahead. Actually, that would be great. Well, let me just open here and hopefully I can ask you to interject.
Sure.
Just momentarily. So, I'm Kim Fortune, I'm from Tyler Road. The main reason that I'm here tonight is in regards to an 1871 Concord ordinance, which at that point in time in history, in our republic, in America here, we actually had general laws. And in looking at things, things have subsequently been, now they're redefined as called revised statutes. Those are equally the same. I've been on this information for 14 years, and just so that I give you a little history as to what I've brought to our governing body here in Webster previously. I've spoken at three different select boards pertaining to this issue. I've been in front of one town meeting, as well as one budget hearing, all on the same issue. And that is how important it really is, not only to me in this town, but to each and every landowner and inhabitant, I feel. In saying that, this is in reference to Concord having, at this point in time, in my interpretation, which I'm not a lawyer, I'm only a layman, pretty much the value of our water and land rights. So subsequently, when that piqued my attention 14 years ago, I started researching all of this. And I thought it was important enough to bring to all these boards, although nothing has been acted upon. So subsequently, I asked again. Let me just reframe that. I do not want to say nothing has been acted upon, because in December 28th of 2021, Dana actually followed through after me having brought it to a selectmen's meeting one more time. And he actually reached out to Thomas Asprey, if I'm saying that correctly, who is the city of Concord.
He's the city manager.
City manager for the town of, the city of Concord. Subsequently, it's my understanding, at, from, as I come here tonight, that gentleman has not gotten back to Dana whatsoever. And do you want me to read this for the record?
The letter you wrote, I'm assuming, right, I see the top, yeah, yeah.
This is Dana asking.
The city of Concord.
Yep.
Or the manager of the town, or it still is, I'm not sure.
Dear Mr. Asprey, a resident of Warner, of Webster, has brought concerns to us about the wording in the above code for the city of Concord. This is relative to an act for an enlargement and extension of a system of waterworks in the city of Concord. It states that the waterworks is authorized to enter upon and appropriate any springs, streams, or ponds in the towns of Bosquen and Webster not belonging to any aqueduct or waterworks. Now, although that's the basics of it, it's not whole of it. This letter is not to question the authority of SBA 38, colon, two. Basically, it says that the water systems have that right. Citizen has encouraged us to ask, in reference to the town of Webster, could be removed from the code as it was for the town of Bosquen. Any assistance you can provide in that regard would be appreciated, from Dana Hadley. Thank you very much for doing that. Unfortunately, we didn't hear back from the city of Concord.
What was that dated?
I was gonna say, when?
That was, it's a year ago, end of.
December 28th, 2001.
And we haven't reached out again to say, hey, hello?
No.
And do you feel like you should just even shoot an email to say, hey, I've had no response? And is he still the city manager?
I, oh, I'm not sure. But I think that since that time, and I think that the, I was kind of referring to the city of Concord's code.
Oh.
It's kind of, but I'm not sure if I really understood it at the time.
State law.
So it is a state law, and our attorney has advised us that to have a state law changed, we would have to go to the legislature.
Or, within this ordinance, the remedy is there as well, which throughout all of these, just so that I clarify, although this is asking, the ordinance begins from the city of Concord, of which they have, what is stated on their website has been amended from the actual documentation that is in the state laws. From, this particular one happens to be from 1881. I do, in fact, have all the originals, although I brought copies tonight. I have all the original documentation. But they've amended it on their website. It's not all of the true wording that is in the state law is actually disclosed. So in regards to transparency and fact, unfortunately, whoever goes to their website is not fully well-informed as to what this actually reads and what it does. So did you both get an opportunity to read the packet that was submitted? And again, for the record, should I in fact read what we're pertaining to?
I didn't read anything. When did you, when was it sent?
It was, it was in your packet.
Oh, in my packet? No, and I, I've been working on Bosquen paper, so, did anyone look at my emails?
So for clarification, and just so that everyone is privy to what we're speaking about when we speak about this 1871 Concord ordinance, i.e. also 1881 state law. So I'm gonna begin with, is it a called, what is their APP? Is that in?
It's appendix, I believe.
Appendix? Thank you. So this is their appendix, city of Concord's appendix into their ordinances, okay? It says, "An act in addition to and an amendment of chapter 79 of the laws of 1871, entitled, 'An Act to Authorize the City of Concord to Establish Waterworks in Said City.'" Subsequently, they're asking to establish a waterworks in their town, their city. The said, section one, "Said city is hereby authorized and empowered to enlarge and improve its waterworks from time to time as shall be necessary or desirable for the uses of its inhabitants and for such purposes from time to time, whereas may take and appropriate any lands, water, and other rights that may be deemed necessary and proper for such enlargements or improvements in the same manner and upon the same terms provided for taking and appropriating land and other rights in the act offered said. And parties aggrieved by any such taking and appropriation shall have the right of appeal, as are therein provided for." Section two. "Section six of this act, to which this is an addition, shall be construed to apply to any further enlargements or improvements of said waterworks, and to authorize and empower said city to borrow money and levy, appropriate taxes, as therein set forth for the purpose of making such enlargements and improvements, and for maintaining and operating the same." Section three. "Said city is hereby authorized and empowered through its city council to establish all needful bylaws to prevent injury to its waterworks and to any of the imprudences thereof, and to prevent any defilement or pollution of the waters of any springs and ponds from which it now takes or shall hereafter take water for the use of the said waterworks and of the water that enters its works, and may annex penalties not exceeding $20 for any single violation thereof, to be recovered and appropriated, and appropriated as provided in section 12, chapter 48 of the general laws." Let me just stop right there and just clarify, $20 in 1871 is equal to $15,000 now, just to clarify. Section four. "This act shall take upon, take effect upon its passage." It took effect in 1881, chapter 175, okay? Shall I read that from the laws of 1881, 175, or no?
You might want to just summarize.
No, that's fine, but, yeah.
That's fine.
Or.
I can get coffee. It goes on.
What, what I'm hearing, and I did review, but there again, is, is you, I love the word "shall." I'm not sure who came up with that. But anyways, you know, they're, they're trying to protect that they can get water when need.
For their inhabitants.
For their, that's right. From, right, and am I, am I, I'm interpreting it the same way you're in? I mean, whatever. That's how I interpret it, is they're, they're trying to,
Excuse me.
In a sense, they probably thought, back in the day, protecting everybody to make sure that they, well, or the city of Concord, not necessarily us, to have water. You know, I think, I think we have, oh, out west, they're having that same issue right now.
Well, public waterworks, I suspect, in that era, was fairly new. And the city was growing, I'm sure. And that they were protecting themselves to give them the right to go in other communities to seek water sources if it was necessary. It's similar, however, there is a state laws on the books now, which is a very similar type of law in RSA 38-2, giving communities, obviously, it's a eminent domain type of thing. You have to prove need, you have to improve public welfare, and obviously, you have to be compensated if it's your land and/or stream or pond that's taken.
This is just the beginning of this, just so I let you know. I have not read the whole thing, because then they would like to... So the appendix 5.3, which we were only referring to appendix 5.2, is "An Act for Further Enlargement and Extension of the System of Waterworks in the City of Concord." Section one, "The city of Concord and the county of Merrimack, in addition to the powers conferred by chapter 69 in the laws of 1871, authorizing the city to contract, manage, maintain, and own suitable waterworks, and chapter 175 of the laws of 1881, authorizing an enlargement of said waterworks, and granting additional powers in relation thereto. As hereby further authorized to enter upon and appropriate any springs, streams, or ponds in the towns of Bosquen and Webster in the county of Merrimack not belonging to any aqueduct or waterworks company."
So Kim, I have a question. You had mentioned that Bosquen.
It's not quite there yet, it goes further, and then it's repealed.
Okay, okay, I, I, I'm just, and, and not that this isn't, and.
This is huge.
Well, and I understand that, but there again, what did, how did Bosquen repeal? How did they get the repeal?
1874.
Right, but what did they do?
They went to the legislature.
Like, what, like, just what the attorney said?
Well, if you continue, if you, if you continue to listen to this whole thing, okay? And again, speaking of the history of waterworks, recognizing that waterworks, you were speaking as to, everyone was going and getting it. This is from the history of the waterworks, just in Bosquen. Bosquen was settled in 1734. The first aqueduct in Bosquen was built in 1794, using logs to convey water from the house lot laid out to the right of the houses of Samuel Swett and Henry Kingsbury, to the houses of Tom Dix, Daniel Carter, Sam Morrell, and Joseph Garrish. Dix was the father of John Adams Dix, who was born in Bosquen in 1798, and became a senator and the governor of the state of New York. The Bosquen Aqueduct Corporation was incorporated in 1827 by James West, Benjamin Morrell, Joseph Chadwick, and Worcester Webster. No further information has been found about that company, this company, excuse me. The Bosquen and Pennacook Waterworks Company was incorporated in 1889 by John Pearson, E.E. Graves, Isaac Gage, A.C. Alexander, John Rhines, E.S. Harris, Charles Ellsworth, Chuck, Charles Chadwick, Frank Garrish, William Buckston, A.A. Harris, Amston, and it goes into other ones. They're here for you, if you'd like them. "For the purpose of furnishing water to those locations known as the Bosquen Plain Village, located in the town of Bosquen, and the Pennacook Village located in said town of Bosquen and the city of Concord, in subterranean pipes, substantial local opposition delayed the project, and it was decided to form a water precinct in it to own and operate the water system." The Pennacook and Bosquen Water Precinct was formed on August 18th, 1891, and was decided that the Waterworks Company should construct the project, which would then be bought by the water precinct. The Waterworks Company awarded a contract to the Michigan Pipe Company of Bay City, Michigan, who built the system using their Wykoff wooden pipe system. And water was supplied in January 1893. The 1933 history of the Wykoff Pipe Company is very satisfactory. Water is supplied by the Pennacook and Bosquen Precinct. So that was beginning in 1827.
So I think.
And 1794.
Which.
Just so that I give you a little history.
I don't want you to think that we're looking at this lightly, but also, also, I think we've come to the realization that the only way we change anything here is through the legislature.
Um, no. No.
Well, I mean, and I appreciate you reading what.
It actually authorizes and it directs if, in fact, the towns, and just so that I clarify,
Because that's what the attorney, town attorney said.
Additionally, at the end of this, Hawkington is too involved in, they've never repealed it.
Can I just?
So in saying that, let me tell you what concerns me. The remedy is actually in the law, which, that's why I've been here three times to three different boards, is primarily because it says that the selectmen are the only ones that can actually change this. Now, we have two avenues from my understanding and my research. We can go to the legislature and ask the 400 people to go ahead and repeal it, although you're gonna have a very strong base from the city of Concord, which is what it is. And I feel as though it's in the best interest of the inhabitants to at least try. Or the direction in this is the selectmen. Bring it forth to the Superior Court, being as, the Supreme Court was just being developed at that point in time in our state. Now, in saying that, the way that it reads in here, verbatim, is that we can ask for any and all damages that have in fact been done by this act.
You mean, you mean, you're trying to say that if, 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 what you, the way you interpret it is that if we were to say to our attorney, town attorney, draw something up for us, selectmen, to, to.
Bring forth to the city of Concord.
Right, bring forth the city of Concord. And Superior Court, which, you know, I don't think that we would want to go without representation, um, which would cost the town money and the legal side of things. And we, we don't, as we always know with legal, you never know what the outcome's gonna be.
I read that, excuse me.
Yeah, go, go, because I.
But I read that as if the city were wanting to buy.
Tapped free to Concord in perpetuity is how it's written in here as well, just so that I let you know.
But it says, should not, if, should the city not be able to agree with owners, therefore for damages, the owner then can go to the Supreme or Superior Court. And that has to do with something different than, you know.
That's eminent domain.
Taken the law. So in other words, if they're not, I'm sorry.
I'm no law, I'm sorry.
If they're not, if, if your property were taken, you were not happy with what they offered you for money, you'd have that remedy to go and do that, yeah.
Right, and that's why I've been very fervent in getting the original copies and not taking for granted what's on Concord City's website. Because it seems to be a bit misconstrued.
But, hold on, he's got a question, and then Teresa's got a question.
My question is, in 18, whatever it is, 1880s, things are so much different now. Why would Concord want our water when they've got two rivers? They got this big reservoir, and now, I mean, there's ways to get water, clear water out of rivers and all that. And they also, if I'm not mistaken, there's, there's a way that they can get water from, I think it's the Contoukot River by River Hill, if I'm not, if I'm on the right, over to that, over to the, if, if the, if their reservoir got low, they can take water from that.
Exactly, and that's exactly why Hawkington is included in here.
But, but I just don't underst, I don't think that, I just can't see why they'd want water from us.
This is at a point in time when the industrial age was just barely taking off.
Right, and things are different now, right, now.
Taking that one step further, this brings up the fact that we are the town that has the aquifer.
Yeah, go, let's find, it's right by a house, I live on it.
The unending water. A stream could dry up, their hydroelectric in the Merrimack could dry up. This is how they're looking. And the Contoukot could in fact dry up. In saying that, they would need subsequent water sources for themselves. Beaver Dam, Bosquen, Webster has the aquifer, Walker Pond. They knew that, geologists all knew that then, that's how the mapping even started. So in saying that, what brings me to this, and what my major concern is, is I understand going through. and what my major concern is, is I understand going through the legislature, I understand all of that, okay? My concern is this places a lien on every property owner in the town of Webster, and has subsequently since eighteen seventy-one.
So when we presented this to the town attorney, did he say anything about liens on it?
It is...
It did not, no.
It is a lien.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to say that. I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a attorney.
No, this is...
And that's why we look to him to give us his best, you know?
I understand. So, so in my curiosity, and the main reason that I'm asking this, are a lot of different things. Primarily, as I interpreted this as a lien on my property, subsequently, what is the value of my property? And in saying that, after speaking with an assessor yesterday about this issue, have we had, and recognizing that right on the municipal, um, Association of New Hampshire, when it speaks about assessments and appraisals and this and that, you've got to have a true and full value. Have all of the people in this town, property owners, been assessed with a true and full value, including this lien? I know when I bought my property, I did a title search. Nowhere, at that point in time, was there any mention of a lien on my title. Nowhere. Nowhere. So subsequently, my question becomes, what has happened to the value and am I being taxed in a true and full value? If in fact I do not have that true and full value. Taking that one step further...
Because you feel that the, that the city of Concord's got a lien on your property.
Everyone's property here. If this, as all of this documentation, as I've looked, in saying that, in saying that, what does that do to the value of our bonds? That we try and raise?
Well, maybe everybody's over-assessed?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't agree that it's a lien.
Right, right, and, and I'm not, but there again, I'm not a lawyer, but that's why we have town attorney, and that's why we spoke with him, you know? I think that I'd like to move forward in saying that, I'd like to reach out to the city of Concord one more time, and, and just say, hey, like the...
And, and here's, here's what I, what I believe now. Even if you can ask the city of Concord to take it off their code.
Yep.
And if they were willing to go to the legislature...
Still gotta, I'm gonna take this right up until nineteen oh five.
They'd have to go to the legislature as well to have the law repealed.
Even, even...
If that's the word I want.
Yeah. Because that's what the town attorney had suggested.
Because that's how, that's how you get a law repealed.
Correct. Now, just so that I clarify, in regards to our state constitution recognizing we're not a home rule state, when in Article twelve, the protection and taxation reciprocal, every member of the community has a right to be protected by it and enjoy his life, liberty, and property. He is therefore bound to contribute his share of the expense of such protection and to yield his personal service when necessary. But no part of a man's property shall be taken from him or applied to public uses without his own consent or the representative body of the people, nor are the inhabitants of the state controlled by any other laws than those to which they or their representative body have given their consent. That was from June second of seventeen eighty-four, original constitution. Although, just so that I let you know, it was in fact amended in nineteen sixty-four by striking out reference to buying one's way out of the military service.
So more or less, more or less, just let me, this is my common sense, mine says that if, for some reason out of the sky, this ever even went down the road you're talking, which I, I can see your concern, but, um, there's a lot of steps that would need to happen, and that says that...
Absolutely, that's why I've been on it for fourteen years.
Well, I understand that, but us as, or whoever the select body as a governing source, would be the ones to, to, like, appeal on behalf of our citizens. Is that, am I saying that correctly?
I would say that's...
So, so it's not like, I don't think, it's not like one of these things where you can, somebody come in, just grab it and say, you know, 'cause eminent domain happens every day, unfortunately, to some people, which is not...
Well, it's a legal process.
It's not, it's not good. I, I've been part of it myself. You know, we want this part of the property 'cause we're gonna expand this part of the highway, and they have to, they have to make a deal with you, and, and I think...
Absolutely, so let's be proactive and not let that happen to any of our people in this town.
Right, but, but I don't know the cost of, you know, that's why I think I suggest, and I think this, we're gonna come to the point where my suggestion that you tell me is, we're just going to reach out to the city of Concord another time and just ask them to, you know, clarify and answer your question, which they ignored the last time. Is that correct? And, and, and then we can look, but, but I don't think spending somebody's tax money in this town on legal and legislature rule changes is prudent to, to, um, you know, go into...
Okay, so just let me give accolades to our founding fathers. Let me give accolades to the founding fathers, and probably the reason that we were the last one to go ahead and actually sign, if in fact that's true, our U.S. Constitution in eighteen seventy-eight. Saying, stating that, our state constitution is probably one of the best in this country. Article fourteen, speaking to what you were just speaking of, says, "Legal remedies to be free, complete, and prompt." "Each subject of this state is entitled to a certain remedy by having recourse to the laws for all injuries he may receive in his person, property, or character to obtain right and justice freely, without being obliged to purchase it, completely and without any denial, promptly and without delay, comfortably to the laws." June second, seventeen eighty-four. From my understanding, that has not been amended.
Sorry, can I make a comment? I am an attorney, sorry.
Nice.
I was, I am an attorney. I am not, I'm currently retired from the bar, so I don't still practice law, but I was...
You're still an attorney. Nobody took that away from you, all right?
Okay, I'm not practicing law, I'm just telling you, in that context, the word freely means available to everyone, that you don't have to buy your way into court, because at the time of the Constitution, only rich people got to go to court. And it freely does not mean without cost, it means it's available to everyone for the same cost. So you still have to pile a filing fee to file an appeal, you still have a filing fee to file a civil action. So in that context, freely does not mean without cost. I've done constitu, that was my specialty at the AG's office, criminal and constitutional law.
Great.
But can it be recouped? Can that be recouped through the process of...
The cost? It depends. If, if a law is unconstitutional and you have it declared unconstitutional in the course of a civil suit, you might be able to recoup attorney's fees.
And what you just say, a civil suit.
In a civil suit.
To sue anything or to anything.
There's restitution for criminal acts, but you don't get your attorney's fees paid back by anyone in a criminal context. Even if you're later found to be not guilty, you don't get your money back. It's in a civil suit, if the suit is frivolous or if you win on the merits, sometimes you can get attorney's fees. And you were right, the only way to change a statute is to go to the legislature or for a court to declare it unconstitutional. But you can't change a statute through a city council or an ordinance. You can only do it through the legislature. That's just, I'm giving my opinion as someone with some knowledge.
Thank you very much, because that's why I've been on this for fourteen years, bringing it to these councils and these, these boards.
And the only thing they could do about it is to bring it to the legislature and lobby to have our town taken off of that statute, if it still exists in that form. I mean, most of the eighteen-hundred laws have been changed, so...
Yes, um, and, and that's why I've done the research all the way up to nineteen oh five and forward.
Going to the board is great if they want to ask, you know, determine whether to ask the legislature to change it. But in my opinion, that should be something the whole town should would have to vote on, not just the council decide that you want, you know, the select board decide that you want.
Because it's gonna cost money, anyway, you look at it.
And it will cost a lot of money. Lawyers are expensive, lobbyists are expensive. It will cost a lot of money to do something like this. So you have to decide if the cost is worth the benefit, because this has never happened in all this time with the water supply. And if it does happen, they have to go through eminent domain, and at that point, you have a chance to prove it's not in the best interest of the community. And if you win an eminent domain, that's one of those circumstances, I believe you may be able to get attorney's fees. I'm not really clear on that. I didn't, I haven't practiced civil law. So I practice criminal law and constitutional law, so...
Thank you very much, though.
But I think this is kind of a waste of the board's time, other than you can write Concord and ask them, but the only way you're gonna get that statute changed is to have that section stricken from it or repealed, and you can only do that at the legislature.
And that's why Bosquin got theirs repealed lickety-split?
But that was a long time ago.
Well, I think they also have a water precinct now.
Hockington's on this too.
But people are different today, and laws are changed, and people see things differently. In the old days, it was only half a dozen people running the town.
Until it goes through the middle of your house. Mr. Jettie, I remember sitting here at a selectman's meeting when Mr. Jettie was very, very concerned about the out, the banks of the river, recognizing that it may in fact go right through the middle of his living room.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
I'm, I am high pressed to believe that people would not, would, this gives, this gives Concord the right to pretty much go haphazardly anywhere with pipes and underground everything.
I think, I think, only if they take it by eminent domain.
Kim, I, I would have to say that that's the way that I understand things, and, and even with, you know, being a property... So I think what we're saying, Kim, is...
Will you be petitioning on behalf of our town to get this repealed to our legislature? Being as you are my governing body? I'm asking you that.
I think you've got not much of a chance to get it repealed with four hundred real people.
That's not what I'm asking you. I'm asking you as my governing body.
I would have to see what the cost would be on even attempting to do that, before I would spend the taxpayers' money on something like she was pointing out that is, is, may not even be a full law at this point in time. And I know eminent domain, it's not that easy to pull, and only, only from what I, I've had happen to even us on our property.
Don't you think that Concord would have said, "Oh, Mr. Hadley, thank you so much for getting a hold of me. That has been repealed."
Kim, you know what, I'm gonna tell you right now, different managers, different, they probably got this letter, and they probably went, "I don't even know what that is," and they called it out, to be honest with you, you know?
Just let me tell you, when I started on this adventure, fourteen years ago, I initiated with an email to the city of Concord, to one person, that's who I was communicating with, four different lawyers, CC, back in that email. So obviously, it was pretty important. And I just know right now that water is very, very valuable. I understand things change, I understand we're up to that. But what my question is tonight is as...
We can't, Kim, we can't answer that. First of all, we don't have a...
Do you have a timeframe that you can?
Um, we probably would need to see if, if we were, if we were to even talk about doing something like that. I'm not sure that the town shouldn't be all included, which would then be a warrant article, correct? Um, so before I would even move or, you know, talk about doing that, that's probably the road that we would maybe go down. But with that, I mean, we, that's why we have town council. We've, we've, we've spent the money with town council already, I mean, he got back to you over the weekend. Um, I don't know that, that, that moving forward, um, you know, the only thing I suppose she could even put in a warrant article, right, for the townspeople to vote on something like that?
Right, and that's why I've been, I've been very assertive.
And it's not that we're trying to, but I'm not gonna spend people's money on something that I feel is...
Two years ago, I stood in front of this town meeting, and it was interesting, because I'm really feeling like the people that were wholly interested in it, they all asked me immediately for copies of it, and I said, "Absolutely, here you go." And that's when the amended part from Concord got put up on the website. Just saying.
Yeah.
So is there a time that you could answer me, do you think, realistically? Because I also know that in regards to sessions for submitting things into our state, that there are in fact timelines for that as well.
True.
And although we've missed this session to go ahead and file anything, they do not go along the same way as municipal.
So I, I personally would not, would not, I would, I would want a warrant article of some sort. I would not be the one, as a governing body, to, um, set forth to change legislature rules. I would want people to be the ones that tell us in this town that they wanna spend the money. Because, and even if you get it changed and you go through this, it's gonna cost money. And I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's prudent at this point that we need to spend the money on.
It's gonna cost a lot of money. And we have been a frugal town, I've been here fifty years, and we've always been frugal on it, and...
On your budget, on your yearly operating budget, wants for services.
But you're still gonna have to pay.
Taking that one step further, taking that one step further. I, I guess my first, first person, or first people, person particularly, that I would be reaching out to, who actually is subjected to this as well, recognizing that it's predated and still on the books to this day, would be the Army Corps of Engineers. They didn't come in until the thirties and forties. That's fifty years after this was done. Concord still predates Army Corps of Engineers here.
I would say, I would say the army would have done their homework, well, I know in the army. So if it doesn't bother them, I just, I mean, I just can't, I, I think of the things that, there's so much water in Concord and around Concord and the rivers, and now you can get to rivers and sail, you know, drink water right out of the rivers, I mean, not right out, but after that it's been, um, chemically treated and stuff like that. So I don't think, I don't, I worry about Concord if they're wanting to take our water, to tell you the truth. They've got the Merrimack River, they've, all of that, Contouka River in Pennacook Park.
So will you be giving a time to open this up, to open this up and inform, inform your townspeople about it?
I...
As a governing body?
I don't think we should, I don't think we...
You don't think you should let your townspeople know?
I don't think they're gonna want, the majority's not gonna want their taxes to go up, I, I almost bet you that.
I, I understand that, but that wasn't my question. I'm just asking.
Again, with, with the chair's not here tonight, because he's...
I would suggest maybe that the board, um, take this under advisement for tonight. Discuss how you think would be appropriate to handle it. I think it's very appropriate to bring it to the community.
Yeah.
Um, we're too late to put up warrants, you know, we've already posted the warrant, so we can add another one.
There's always the, after the end of the town meeting, there's always...
Yeah, but I think you'd wanna be able to...
I've done that for two years in a row, and that's when I had my opportunity. I said, "You know something?" Whereas I've already been to the select board two different times prior to tonight, and they have done nothing about it, that's when I did bring it to the legislative body of this municipality, and I did speak at the end. Absolutely.
Why don't you go to your local representative or senator? If you want laws changed, why don't you go to the legislature over this? The town, if you are so interested in this, go to the legislature and get one of the legislators to propose a change to the law for you. I mean, that's what your answer...
I guess you're probably right. I guess you're probably right. And being as this is such an awesome state with our constitution, being as it's a general court. What the heck, why not? Right?
What you have to do, if you want, if you wanna propose legislation, what you do is you go to your local representative or state senator and ask them to propose it.
Yes.
To present it for you, and they'll send it to committee and figure out if it's worthwhile to do. I mean.
I understand. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm in hopes that you'll at least give the opportunity to inform your community. That I, this is a state law and essentially it's affecting their value too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Full business. Town property maintenance.
Dave asked me to, um, talk about a few, a few things and bear with me while I shuffle through and see if I can find what they are. Basically, um, some of the, I'd like to tell you the town hall furnace are repaired.
Yay. You got heat in the library?
It was actually, we had.
Heat in the library?
What about the library?
You get heat?
You have, you have heat now.
Yes.
Good.
Yes, so far.
It was, well, stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
But it was, it was nice to actually have heat and I really appreciate it. I think Huckleberry's really worked hard to straighten that out. Uh, Dave wanted us to bring up the second driveway for the safety building, which, um, is to go to the salt shed, the new salt shed. As you know, there were too many driveway cuts and the state would not, we believe the state would not issue us a driveway permit. So, um.
Have we asked?
So Emmett is working on that.
I mean, have we put in a, an application?
Russ is waiting to put in an application, but we need information from Emmett. And, and we've told Emmett, and I spoke with him today, and just reminded that we need to move that forward. So I think that's something we will need to do. Um, Dave is concerned about the retaining wall down in the driveway with the, it's falling apart. Emmett is, has talked to Mitchie and I have not, again, I reminded Emmett about that today. Um, fobs for the town hall, that's the new door downstairs that we're gonna have the electronic fobs to unlock the door. I called ESP, that company today, um, and they have not gotten back to me and I just did it today, so, um, I imagine.
You'll be on that case.
What happened? How come people call back the same day?
Well, you know, when I'm calling, I want.
I don't know who you are.
Dana from the town of Webster.
Usually they hang up.
Just to let you know, the front stairs are really covered with snow and icy, so if you guys go out, be careful.
This may be a little safer, cause that's got the rain.
We went out to sand it, but.
Okay.
Oh, that's nice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
And thank you for your information.
That's, that's huge.
Well, I've been here, I used to come every meeting because I was a Pillsbury Lake president. And the only way to shut this down is to give real information.
Oh, absolutely. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
And, you know, I do not practice law now. I retired a couple of years ago. But I'm still an attorney and just not admitted to the, I'm retired from the bar.
You have all that information.
I just pay money and I can practice law.
It's okay, we don't pay any money.
I knew the stairs are gonna be bad.
Yeah, that's tricky, those are tricky. Um, the unitile billing, I think Dave wanted me to talk about, um, and we've been talking about the unitile billing. The bills this month are just, they're, they're horrendous and we're.
Is that cause the library was sucking up all the electric heat?
No, I'm only kidding.
No, I just added to it. It definitely added.
It, it's really added, it's really added to it. However, um, you know, the rates have just been, supposedly they're supposed to come down. But I think Dave's concern is, and I know Marty's working on the solar arrays, one wasn't functioning the way it should.
Over here? I don't know, because we still haven't gotten them to come out here. And there was a guy, there was a guy out here, he said, yes, they're all working, but he wasn't able to measure them.
Oh.
Because they still haven't gotten.
Well, we knew they were working, but, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Um, so all that's happened is I'm waiting for, for Ashley from GSS to call me back and set up a time when there will be somebody out there to fix the, the dashboard, you know? I mean, have you ever looked at?
No, we, did they ever put a dashboard up there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it is?
It's not up there. No, you can look it up.
Okay. Weren't they supposed to put something out there? So people could look at it?
Yeah, but we never did.
We never got it.
Right, and they never did it because we had a problem with them and then.
Yes, yes, I remember that.
Right.
Is this still on, is this like a warranty issue?
No, 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 no warranty issue. No, um, but the problem is, we can't even see how much. Well, actually, we can, because we can look at our unitile bills. Um, but the problem is that we can't tell, except I was looking at the, looking at the bills. It's obvious to me that the, the, if you remember, there's two, there's two meters, there's the north and the south, right? And the south would should be giving a little bit more than the north, right? Well, actually, it turns out that the north is giving quite a bit more than the south, so.
Something's goofy.
Right, right, and so she said that the guy was out there, um, he did, he tested them all. He said, yes, they're all working, so there's nothing.
It's almost doubled, isn't it, Marty?
Right, right, for last year.
There's, well, the two arrays, um, and like Marty said, the north array is twice the generation than the south array.
It was actually, it was thirty-four, thirty-four, I guess megawatts, um, for the northern. And the southern, which again, like she was usually the past years, was slightly more than the north. This was nineteen, so thirty-four and nineteen.
Wow.
Yeah, um, so, um, and so I told her, she's, first they've gotta fix the dashboard so we can actually read it, um, because it's reading zero.
Are they still in business?
But I don't understand, why is that not cut, why, why, are they covering, finishing, fixing that?
Well, because.
We're not gonna pay for that, right?
They're busy and we're not, obviously, you know.
And we haven't really been after them that long, I mean, we've, you know. Um, I think part of Dave's, um, focus on this, and I shouldn't speak for him, but since he's not here, I'm, I'm gonna do my best. Um, we have, we have a lot of accumulated bank of kilowatts. And, um, so we either owe quite a good sum of money or Dave would rather, I think, see us, and I don't know if this is possible, Marty, if we can offset that, our electric use for that? You had said, no.
I don't think they, I don't think they can.
Because of several different facilities, is that?
Because, you know, that's what started this whole problem with Granite State Solar, right? Because we assumed that they were gonna treat it just the way they had treated all of their other installations. This was the first installation they were doing with something municipal. Everything else they had done up to this point, it's about five years ago, they had just been doing residential. And so with the residential like mine.
You get kickback in a sense.
Right, in other words, they cut back, you know, the amount that you have to pay.
Right.
Right? The problem with this was that, that's what they had intended to do. And then, oops, they found out they couldn't do that because they're across the road and they're not attached to this building. So what happens is, so this building, we have to pay, we have to pay just as if we were an ordinary resident, right? Except, except what I just found out was, we're not paying just like a resident, we're paying like a commercial. Um, right, and that's why we're paying instead of, which is already high, the, the residential is, if you're a unitile, you're paying about twenty-five, I think, twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour, right? Which is high, I mean, it's, it's like the highest it's been in the state ever, right? The only problem is, that's nothing compared to commercial, which is what we're paying on this, which is forty-two.
How can it, how can we, can we be really a commercial?
We are considered, cause we're municipal, we're a municipality, and it's considered a commercial.
So do we commercial across the street for a kickback?
No, no, and that's, and that's another thing.
Yeah.
Of course, right, so, and, cause that, all they're, all they're giving us for our bank, right? Because they're just putting it into the bank now. Um, which they're getting put into the bank for the, for whatever the residential is, is making. So it's like about, you know, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, so, so we're, we're being hurt pretty badly.
So what is, what can we do?
Well, actually, Dave, Dave has a great idea, right? But it's nothing that's gonna happen in, you know, next year, right? Because Dave's idea was that when they, if and when they come and they put in, you know, the, the giant, um, the giant solar panel, um, you know, the one that'll be down off, off, off the Deumeta Road, right? He thinks that they would, they'll just, just kinda toss it in, um, and they'll put up a bunch of, um, solar panels probably behind the, you know, behind the police station. Um, and that would co- and those could be directly, those could be connected, unlike those.
Cause they're across the street.
Those, those we could basically sell to the school district.
That's what I was wondering, I was just gonna say, the, the school district's on the same side of the road.
Right, right, and if it was with the solar, with.
They must be commercial.
Um, I would imagine they are, yeah, yeah. But anyway, yes, what could happen is, it would be very nice, because if they were, if we hooked that up for the solar panels across the street, they could be hooked up directly to the school, which would, in other words, that would probably bring their, their bill down to a lot smaller.
So what do we need to do to do that?
Again, we have to just, um, hopefully at some point.
I think for now, we're, I've gotta fill out this form that's due by April fifteenth.
Right, that's for the, that's for the bank.
And that's for the bank, and, and see how much we're gonna get paid, and I'm sure it's not gonna be what we think it should be.
Really?
And then you can figure out the whole school.
They should send us a check, I mean, so basically we'd have a revenue to offset a little bit of our expense if we looked at it that way, but.
But I think it's a good, I'd sell it to the school. Have you talked to Fred Reagan, Reagan, and he's in charge of the facility?
Not, 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 since, since we were talking about setting up the, the heat, remember we were talking about?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But that was like ten years ago.
Well, so, before he retires, talk to him, please, about solar, cause he's pretty, he'd be pretty good. I like him, he's a good guy.
He is good.
Yeah.
So Dana, is there anything that we need to?
So that's just, uh, so you know what's happening.
Anyway, yeah, it's, it's a possibility. It might even make more sense for us to just basically sell it to the school district.
Right.
Um, and that would be, that would be direct rather than having to go through the grid, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think you ought to talk to Fred.
Yeah.
He's a real good guy.
Yeah, because we're not, we're certainly not getting a very good deal.
Oh, right, and it, and eventually, you know, the town will get the deal because of the school district anyway, I mean, and whatever they say.
Well, that, that of course depends on them, you know, putting in the big solar field, right? But again, we still have no idea, from what I understand from Dave, it's just sort of on hold.
Yeah, that's weird. Well, I know one thing, not doing business with GSS again.
Well, actually, if you remember, the guy who, who, he was pretty much the guy who screwed up the whole deal.
Lived in Webster?
Right, he, he ended up getting, um, I wouldn't say he got fired, but he got, he was squeezed out. Um, and he was squeezed out pretty, pretty soon after, after the whole debacle.
Yeah, we tried, we tried, Marty. We tried to save the town.
I understand now they're, they're still, they're a very good, um.
Well, they, they need to step up that a little bit, you know, just cause, you know, that was their employee.
Yeah.
You know, we all have them.
Right.
And, and when they, when they, when they walk away, you're still responsible, so I, I don't know who you can speak to.
I will call Ashley. She's the one who's in charge of the, of dealing with this.
And you may need to be a little bit tougher, and which is hard, because, but you can say it's not, it wasn't, it's not the town's issue that, you know, that we all have bad employees.
I mean, she's, yeah, anyway, I will call her.
Yeah.
And talk to Fred.
Yeah, okay, that's a good idea.
He's got some good ideas.
And Fred's retiring, you say, at the end of the year?
Oh, I don't, oh, no, I don't know. I hope not.
Okay.
Hope he's still, no, he's still, he, I don't think he can do that yet. I think he's like in his, uh, not old enough. He's got a few years to go.
I do remember Fred, yeah.
He's a great guy.
Yeah, he is a nice guy.
And, and we, okay, and if, we just have a second, and let me just ask you, uh, this is something else. What about the, uh, electrician?
Well, the electrician was going to come in Friday.
Yes.
And I have not seen him yet.
Okay.
Although this is not unusual.
Right, nor is it ever.
And someday he'll be here.
Okay.
I'm hoping, I, I mean, I'll call him again if I don't hear from him in the next couple of days.
Okay, remember you, we could get Zach to put them in already, right?
We, now, we could get Zach, cause they've been calling me about coming down, and have it put in, but if there's no power.
No, but, but I understand, the, the problem is that Mike is going away, you know, his.
Right.
Vacation, which I guess is a few weeks.
Everything is so complicated, isn't it, Mike?
That's a fact.
Um, I'll call him tomorrow.
I mean, I would think, I'm not worried about it, you know, for the, you know, for the next, the next movie. I'm just thinking about, you know, you want it for, um, for town meeting day.
Well, I think town meeting would be great, um, and they did ask me if I had a ladder that would reach up there.
Yeah.
I came up and we have a ladder out back and I don't think it quite reaches.
Okay.
Unless you've got someone that wants to hang on by your heels trying to get that thing in and I.
So, what, what, I know we have a real big ladder.
I don't know.
I shouldn't have said that.
But they told me that, um, CompuTech also has a big ladder.
Okay.
However, Zach has, um, is driving a Honda.
Oh, geez.
And so I can't imagine him putting it on the roof of the car.
That'd be fun though.
He needs a truck to get it, you know, so, anyway.
All right, so I just wanted to.
I appreciate it.
I wanted to find out what was going on.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Marty. Did you, are you just hanging, okay, we didn't wanna leave you out there.
During the show.
Yeah, I know.
I knew it would be interesting with Kim. I had to, to your tip also.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stuck around after, let them wanna walk out there with you.
Mind the stairs.
Right, yeah, be careful. Um, abatements?
That's for the campground. I did prepare it, so we're gonna have to get that up.
We're gonna skip that, okay?
We're gonna skip that one.
All right, correspondence, do we?
Okay, I have, I have one, Karen King, um, has been talking with people about being her deputy.
Oh.
And she has, um, uh, identified someone who she would like.
Karen King?
Is the tax collector.
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 and so she gets, she needs a deputy too?
And she needs a deputy.
Okay, and which we've never, have we ever had one?
Um, yes, yes, we have. Michelle Derby used to be her deputy.
Oh, oh, I don't think I did that, okay.
And really, it's one of these deals, I mean, I strongly say let's get a deputy, cause after this town clerk thing, we don't need to do this again. Karen has, um, met and talked with someone named Amanda Cummings.
Yeah.
Um, she, I don't know if you know Amanda, I do not.
Yeah, long time resident.
She lives in Webster and she's currently employed at the Granite State Management.
Yes.
She's used to accounting, she knows, she can do this. So Karen would, is asking if you would be willing to appoint Amanda as deputy tax collector.
I would appoint Amanda as deputy, absolutely, the town is very lucky.
So I do not make up a thing, but if you wanna make a motion and then at your next meeting, I'll have you sign about.
So I make a mo- do I do it, and then you second, or do you do it?
Yeah, second.
I make a motion to, um, appoint Amanda Cummings as deputy tax collector.
Second.
Oh, Taylor, aye. Yes, oh, is that the, that's, boy, that was easy.
That was, but I'm glad you knew her, cause I was, you know, I don't.
No, I mean, that's, that's, that's great.
So I think that's, that's really good. Speaking, speaking of that, Mary has, um, been working very hard to try to come up to speed. Um, she has been shadowing at Boss Quinn last week and she went over there today. She has met with the election people, um, to work out how the election, I'm very encouraged. Um, so I, I think that the election will go smoothly. Um, Mary is going to come to you and she's talking about changing her, her office hours a little bit, but still offering, um, she's talking about being open two nights a week instead of just one. but still offering, um, she's talking about being open two nights a week instead of just one.
Oh, that'd be nice.
A lot of people love that.
So I think that she's really trying to serve, you know, serve the constituents the best she can. And between the training that she's going through, um, with Boskewin, just seeing the, a feel of it, Avatar's gonna train her on software and the state has to train her on, um, the plates and the registration, that type of thing. She's thinking she may not be open till the beginning of April.
That's fine.
Which I think is, is fine. We've got, we've been, we are so lucky that we have Michelle Corser helping us.
Even, yes.
You know, and, and basically we have not had a lot of problems other than you're stuck with me who has no idea how to run an election, but, uh-
Yeah, you know what? Mike Chetty, Mike is an ace. He is an ace man.
But anyway, she has-
And you have us floating around.
That's right.
But I think it will go really well. You know, Nancy has been a big help and so has Mike. We've, we've met a few times and so that's-
Well, I think we should feel very fortunate and it's nice to see that Amanda wants to be, I mean, that's, this is great.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's-
Makes her feel pretty good about her small, yeah, yeah. Yeah, she's got a four-year degree in account.
I know when she was little.
I think that's fantastic. Wow.
So that's the- That's my correspondence. Uh, Russ had this. You, you wanna talk about that?
It's just a subdivision approval for the eight seventy-four Battle Street property. They came in, subdivided it.
Is that the house? I knew we should, the town should have bought that, kept that house, sold the house and divided the acreage and we could have made all kinds of money.
But we're not gonna make money, so, no.
That's the problem.
They're gonna make money.
That's the conditions of approval.
I think they, I think they, I think they-
Oh, looks nice. Gonna be nice.
I think, I think, I think everything's going, not bad. I-
I'm glad we don't own it.
Yeah, yeah, and, and even the subdivider guy was saying that, so-
It would've been nice to have more land on the river for, you know-
You know, it's not that accessible.
Just have to walk down the hill.
All right.
Um, so that's all I had for correspondence.
Awesome.
And, um, your public seems to have to-
Public comment?
Public?
A chair number brown? Okay, um, approval of the minutes, uh, for February sixth and February seventh?
I make a motion we approve them.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you've included the non-public minutes in there?
Certainly.
Yeah.
I cannot, will never catch any, um-
No, you won't.
Bad grammar. So don't worry. I don't know about you. You're probably way better at it than me.
Yeah, I'm good at it, but I'm, I'm on vacation today. I've improved reading of Boskewin papers. I have to say this, so like, man.
Or does Dana need something more?
What was that?
Listen, he's still making notes.
I have to confer with Russ. Was it, was there something that I did not think?
No, I don't think so. I mean, Dave had corrections, but they moved to approve it as meant, as written, so.
Okay, well, good.
Corrections there are.
So that's all we had for tonight, unless you'd like to stay till eleven o'clock.
I think that's worth doing.